Good morning. I am calling to order today's Portland City Council meeting. It is 9:31 on Wednesday, September 3rd. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Koi Amaline.
Here.
Maria.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Avalos.
President.
Dunphy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Canal.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Hertelkinney.
Here. And could you please read our rules of decorum?
Thank you, Council President. Welcome to Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. Individuals may testify for three minutes unless the presiding officer states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The presiding officer preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. If you are a lobbyist, identify your organization. And third, virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the council clerk calls their name. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, our first agenda item today is agenda approval. No changes to the agenda have been proposed other than the removal of one thing from consent. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do I have unanimous consent to approve the agenda. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is public communication. Rebecca, could you please call up our first guests this morning?
First, we have Nathan Anderson.
Good morning, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Anderson. I prefer being called Lyra, she/her. So what I would like to discuss is that we are clearly living in unprecedented times and that I think that I would like to speak on the matter I believe all of us can agree is a threat to our Constitution and the rights that it guarantees us as citizens and residents of the United States of America. That matter being the actions committed by the agents of the Immigration and Customs Enforcement under the discretion of the Trump administration. As of late, we are seeing numerous reports and incidents of our neighbors and fellow residents, even citizens, being abducted by masked agents with no warrant, no crime that they are being detained for, and no representation to be spoken of in any court of law. A right that each and every single person, even those who are not United States citizens are within our borders, is guaranteed under the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution. And as of now, we are watching members of our communities taken from us in our schools, our religious establishments, our workplaces, our restaurants, our courts, even their homes can provide no sanctuary. Men and women, young and old, and children by the hundreds are being either forcefully deported or detained in concentration camps, with even the support of the National Guard being used to suppress the population, such as in Los Angeles in the 8th of June. And currently, the capital itself is under military occupation by our own armed forces. And now, there is talk about the National Guard being sent to Chicago as well. And even more concerning are the comments by the Secretary of Labor about eventually sending an occupation force to Portland. And I can assure you, it will not stop there. These incursions by the National Guard have nothing to do with curbing crime, but it has everything to do with control and curbing dissent in favor of the secret police, that is, the ICE and its agents. This is not just a violation of our First Amendment rights, but it is a clear attempt. It is the administration's desire to occupy the country they are sworn to act as the sovereign defender of. Yet instead, they wish to invade our cities as if they were part of a foreign nation, essentially making an unofficial declaration of war upon their own people. Yet despite this, despite the many violations and the clear attempt for the destruction of constitutional law and the rights of the people, Congress sits by and does nothing. Even the outspoken members do little more than hope that America will vote out a man who openly makes attacks and punishes those who challenge his authority, and the Supreme Court indulges itself in its mockery of justice through corruption. Our representatives in the federal branch have abandoned us, but we do not need to fall with the rest of this crumbling state. We have no reason to submit to the will of a man who refuses to uphold his oath of office. And with this in mind, I urge us to peacefully stand united against the clear threat of a deranged and illegitimate tyrant for the peaceful independence of Cascadia, where we will stand for the rights of the people and declare that the consent of the governed is an undeniable truth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Addie Smith. Nathaniel Hudson-Hartman. Lynn Handlin. Fisher Jamison.
Welcome. Thank you very much for being here with us.
Thank you, councilors. And for the record, my name is Fisher Jamison. I had originally signed up for this testimony slot a couple months ago to complain about the street plaza at 31st and Division being removed. Since I moved to Division five years ago, that had been one of my favorite summer happy hour spots, first a COVID-safe way to escape my apartment, and later just a great place to enjoy the weather and read a book or wrap up work. I'm still a loyal Imperial Brewing customer, but with the plaza gone, the energy on that corner is gone. And you can tell that the level of foot traffic at the businesses fronting it is down significantly. At the time, I had a lot of questions about the rationale for the removal. The city cited fire codes, with no one really having an answer for why fire code required the removal of this plaza, but not others that take up the full length of a city block. But over the last couple months, it's become apparent that this is part of a consistent pattern. Some issue is flagged with a piece of pedestrian infrastructure, and the city has no way to resolve that issue without just removing the infrastructure entirely. We're seeing the consequences of this everywhere. In the places I visit, I'm seeing fewer pedestrian plazas and less outdoor dining. The vitality of our streets is suffering as a result. Portland feels quieter and emptier, less like a city where you could go for a stroll after a meal and stumble upon a small business you'd never visited before, and less like a city where you'd want to open a small business to take advantage of the foot traffic in your neighborhood. I don't think this is an outcome that anyone is looking for. I don't think city staff wants this, and I doubt anyone on this council wants it. Even if there are some disagreements about exactly how our streets should be configured, I think everyone recognizes that our walkable neighborhoods are the backbone of this city's economy. What I do think we're dealing with here is a regulatory system that was never designed to allow anything besides parking spaces and car lanes on our streets. During COVID, we recognized that we were in an extraordinary moment, and we needed to throw out those regulations entirely. As COVID restrictions were lifted, we didn't take enough time to truly reevaluate the rules we had for how we could use our streets. I want to first echo testimony from Harper Haverkamp of Strong Towns a couple months ago, who called for easier and more standardized permitting as a solution to this problem. But I think we also need to go further. Portland is going to end this year with fewer street plazas and outdoor dining spaces than we started with at this rate. And we need to treat this like the emergency it is. We need amnesty for nonconforming structures permitted during COVID and a complete moratorium on the removal of plazas and outdoor dining structures without approval from this city council. Then, we need to properly revisit how these structures are regulated and create a real transportation funding stream to allow PBOT to maintain them. Thank you for listening, and thank you all for working to save our streets.
Thank you very much for being here today to share your concerns.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Rebecca. Colleagues, the next item on our agenda is the committee referral report. Bear with me, it's a little bit long this week. I referred approval of the comprehensive plan map, zone map, and Title 33 amendments related to the Portland-Gresham Urban Service Boundary Amendments project to climate resilience and land use, as well as directing the city administrator to approve a new Portland-Gresham Urban Services IGA to climate resilience and land use. I referred to adopt the Portland Urban Forest Plan to climate resilience and land use. Authorize Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain temporary rights for construction along 102nd to 115th and on shaver to the Finance Committee. Initiate foreclosure action at 8315 North Wayland to finance. Initiate foreclosure acture on 5130 Southeast 84th to finance. Initiate foreclosure action on 3821 Northwest St. Helens Road to finance. Initiate foreclosure action on 1822 Southeast Caesar Chavez Boulevard to finance. Initiate foreclosure action on 1810 Southeast Chavez Boulevard to finance. Initiate foreclosure action at 1625 Southeast 35th Avenue to finance. Initiate foreclosure action on 1541 Southwest Market Street to finance. Initiate foreclosure action at 1140 Southeast 139th to finance. Initiate foreclosure action at 1541 Southwest Market Street to finance. Initiate foreclosure action on 12229 Southeast Sherman to finance. Declare property located at Southeast 21st and Powell Surplus for sale at fair market value to finance. Amend small donor election code to governance. Amend parking space reservation code to transportation and infrastructure. Authorize use of disparity studies to inform and support minority contracting to labor and workforce development. Reappointments to the Revenue Division Appeals Board to finance. Assess property for system development charge contracts and private plumbing loan contracts to finance. And amend city code to reduce permit submittal requirements for upgrade requirements to homelessness and housing committee. Colleagues, the next item on the agenda, because this is the first meeting of the month, is the city administrator report. Mr. Jordan, would you like to give us an overview or provide any highlights from your written report?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President, and welcome back, everybody. I hope you had a good break. The report, as you have, is a still-evolving document, for sure. A couple of things to note. The very last page of the report is the first, excuse me, report from the chief procurement officer on contract awards over a 30-day period prior to August 20th in this particular case of the report. Hope to continue to hone this and make it more useful to all of you. So please, any feedback that you have would be helpful. I will note also, the first appendix is the budget note report. I mentioned last meeting that I would be, or last report, I should say, that I would be reaching out to you if, in fact, we are not already in a conversation and making progress on the note. I have yet to do that, I apologize. And we'll be doing that very shortly to get to those which aren't already scheduled to be making progress. And then the last thing I'd like to mention, Madam President, is, under the category of this report being an evolving document, we have noticed that both the narrative parts of the report as a whole and the individual narratives of items continue to grow. And we have some staff who are novelists in another life and are wanting to make sure they're getting the words into this report. So your feedback on any of those kinds of things, the form, the length, the content, any feedback you want to give us, I would appreciate that in trying to make this as usable as it can be over time. And happy to try and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I had also known, or noticed, rather, that the report was growing in length, and I appreciate you noting that. I think we need to continue to work toward the balance of making sure that we all get all the information that we need, but that we also have it in a readable, digestible format in the time we have between when it's published in this meeting so that folks can come with questions. Speaking of which, I see Counselor Smith, your hand up. Do you have a question for Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you. City Administrator Jordan, I appreciate the report. One of the things that I could suggest is that if we could just have, since the last time that you did the report of all the monies that we, instead of going all the way back to January 1st every single time, start with the previous month. What has been done since the previous month that you gave us the report? That might kind of put it down a little bit. So on page two of the report, it outlines plans to approve the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. And we're joining a settlement to receive payments from the Sackler family. And we're also joining a settlement for payments from eight smaller opioid manufacturers. Could you explain that? And will that have an impact on the $9.5 million that we're receiving right now from the opioid settlement?
I guess I might defer regarding legalities of the settlement to the city attorney or someone else who might be here for that. But as far as the actual proceeds are concerned, I don't think that these new, joining these new settlement agreements will affect the $9.5 million at all.
Because we're going to be getting that for the next 18 years, right?
Quite a while, yes.
Yep. And so do you know which specific opioid drugs we're filing against this time?
I do not. And I don't know if Lindley.
I don't know either, Counselor, but we can get back to you on that if you'd like a report.
Thank you. One last question. I was looking at the grants division piece, and I also noticed that there was no mention of the PSEF, the dollars being taken away, the RFPs, the grantees that receive those dollars. And I know we were going to talk about this, and we've talked about it in a smaller group, but I had no idea that all of the PSEF grants that were awarded were going to be taken. The Willamette Week had an August 28th report where it says that the PSEF grants were emailed that RFPs were canceled due to the mayor's July 31st executive order. And this was the first time that I learned that all of them were going to be revoked. I knew that some programs, as a result of the executive order, were going to, but just curious why we didn't have an update or a report on the PSEF under the Grants Department.
Yeah, my understanding, Counselor, is that we are going through, city attorney, along with Office of Equity and Human Rights and procurement, are going through all, and I'm sure PSEF staff are involved in this too, our triaging what I would call all of the grant or contracts that are in flight. In other words, they've gone through some process to award.
The PSEF contracts.
Yes, PSEF and other contracts also.
This was a specific request, and that's fine. We can follow back up. And just one last question. I was looking at the chief equity officer note. So is this, this new job application, is this Jeff Selby's current job? Or is this a person that's going to report to Jeff Selby?
It is that job. Jeff has been in it on an interim basis for some time.
And why?
Well, when we restructured two years ago and created the officer's position, along with comms and climate, we had always assumed that there would be a recruitment for that job. We have had one, and it failed. And so we're attempting to do that again.
I kind of liked Jeff. I think he's been doing a great job.
I like Jeff, too.
And I'm just not sure why he's been doing this job for three years and not being considered of being appointed for this job and that we have to do this national search.
Happy to discuss it offline with you, Counselor, if you wish.
Yes, I understand. I understand. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Canal, did you have questions for Mr. Jordan?
Yes, Madam President, thank you.
Go right ahead.
First, to give feedback to your question, first, thank you for the report. To give feedback to your question, I think longer is very helpful for us. And I'm happy to indulge the novelists by reading it. I also think, you know, you may end up having to do an executive summary to kind of, you know, square that. And I'm sure you've thought of that. I also wanted to just ask about getting more information about some of the IGAs that the city is involved in over time in the report. And I'm happy to follow up with you with more information on that. I'll just quickly mention the concern around, the equity comment made me think about the importance of talking about this core services realignment a little further as it relates to the degree to which it pulls these branches of work up from the bureau to the service area, or whether that continues all the way up to the central side. So that's where I think there hasn't been a lot of conversation around equity yet as it relates to some of the other disciplines. And I'd love to have council be a part of that conversation. And then, just while I have the floor, welcome to the new fire chief. Thanks for shouting that out. And thanks to interim chief Jackson for her service during the transition as well. And then, for those who are interested in violence prevention, we are, and I appreciate it, being highlighted that the recruitment I've been asking about since January is live for the Office of Violence Prevention's program manager. And you can find that and all the other city jobs at governmentjobs.com. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green, did you have questions for Mr. Jordan? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for the report, once again. I also like the length. I do read them. I'm curious if a future iteration of this report would give us an update on the status of the Zenith franchise agreement investigation?
Appreciate that, thank you, Counselor. You should have an update in your inbox this morning. I sent one this morning to update council on the status. If you wish, I can very briefly here let you know that we had a discussion a couple of months ago around, well, maybe more than a couple now, around the getting of outside counsel to oversee and help with the structure of the investigation that we're doing under the franchise agreement. We now have that, and it's in your report. We now have that outside counsel onboard. The staff have met with them once already to go over all of the materials that we have gotten from Zenith under the franchise request and the work that was done by PP&amp;D to do inspections on some of the physical changes that were concerns also about permitted work that was done there. And so all of that data is being brought together with the outside counsel to go over. The note that you have says that "we hope to finish all of that work by the end of the calendar year with the outside counsel."
Okay, thank you for that. And I look forward to reading that report in my inbox. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ryan, did you have questions for Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning. Mike Jordan. My question is to make sure that, under grants, we're implementing the somewhat recent code that we passed in 2024. My office led it, so of course I'm attached. We didn't have anything, we didn't have discipline that had this in our records, which was that we need to have current financial documents, and we need to have a current listing of their board members. And for some reason, the city didn't have that checks and balance, and we are sending out grants without that due diligence. So I'm not in that role anymore, and I'm not micro in it, but I could ask you this question right now to make certain that we are doing that with fidelity.
My understanding is we are, Counselor, but I'll get back to you and make sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor Koi Amaline, do you have a question for Mr. Jordan?
Yes. I also want to thank Counselor Smith for bringing up the Office of Equity and Human Rights, which is very important. We know, over the years, we have seen that office being cut almost in half. And as we are having constituents come and speak to us, all often, including today, about the threats that we're facing, it's really important that we are working closely with that office, that we're making sure that council is in communication and working with the administration. So I would encourage the administration to be working with us as much as possible. Council President and I have been talking about this since we've been sworn in. This is something that I have been taking a lead on. And especially as we're leaning on that office for things like the executive order and different things that are coming up, it's, I would love to hear the plan of how to make sure that a national search isn't taking a year, but that we have a good plan to make sure we can act really quickly and nimbly, because this is very urgent. And I would love to talk more offline.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith, are you back in the queue? Counselor Smith? Okay. Okay. Colleagues, that concludes questions about the city administrator report. Mr. Jordan, thank you for putting this together for us every month. And I think you heard from a number of folks today that we prefer more information.
Got it.
So, you know, let's not, let's not have folks go on at such length that we can't digest it all. Colleagues, the next item on our agenda is a time-certain item that is scheduled for 10 o'clock. So I'm 10 o'clock, so I'm going to have us take up the consent agenda first. Item number seven was pulled off of the consent agenda, so it has been moved to the end of our regular agenda. So we are approving the rest of the consent agenda. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Knoll?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hurdle Guinea?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed with unanimous consent.
Thank you. And we still have a few minutes. Rebecca, are we able to move on to Agenda Item 8 while we wait for the time-certain item? I see Lindley nodding yes.
Yes.
Okay, could you please call Agenda Item 8?
Authorize Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary property rights necessary for construction of the 82nd Avenue Gleason and Davis Signal Improvements Project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Thank you. And colleagues, this is a second reading, so if there is not further discussion, we will move directly to a vote. Okay, seeing no one in the queue, Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Koyamalane?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Aye. Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Knoll?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hurdle Guinea?
Aye.
And the ordinance passes with 12 aye votes.
Thank you. Could you please read the next agenda item?
Amend council organization and procedure code to include council rule on tiebreaking.
Colleagues, this is also a second reading, so unless there is further discussion, we will move to a vote. Seeing none, Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Knoll?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hurdle Guinea?
Aye.
The ordinance passes with 10 aye votes.
Okay. And I believe we are, we are one minute to 10. So Rebecca, could you very slowly call Agenda Item 5 for us?
Amend city code to reduce permit submittal requirements and temporarily suspend city-imposed development upgrade requirements. I think we've got about 20 seconds.
That was great. That was very slow. While we wait for another couple of seconds, I believe this came out of the Homelessness and Housing Committee, and that we have a committee staff summary from Claire, is that correct? And we are at 10 o'clock, so Claire, if you would like to go ahead and give us that overview, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam President and Counselors. For the record, Claire Adamczyk, Council Policy Analyst and Staff to the Homelessness and Housing Committee. The ordinance before you, Document 2025-314, was heard in the Homelessness and Housing Committee on August 12, where it was referred to counsel with the recommendation to pass. The ordinance directs the adoption of the Findings of Fact Report and the Code Alignment Project Recommended Draft. The recommended draft proposes amending four chapters in Portland City Code related to upgrade requirements and site alterations for development projects that meet a specified project value threshold. The proposed code amendments include the following. For Title 11 Trees, suspend street tree planting requirements for additions and alterations until January 1, 2029, and reduce tree plan or minimum tree planting size requirements in certain development situations. For Title 33 Planning and Zoning, suspend nonconforming upgrade requirements for all projects until January 1, 2029. For Title 24 Building Regulations, suspend requirement of seismic evaluation reports for projects that meet or exceed a specified valuation threshold in buildings constructed or renovated prior to 1974. And for Title 17 Public Improvements, apply a partial waiver of street frontage improvements for projects that propose significant alterations of a building that do not result in increased occupancy. The ordinance further clarifies the applicability of the amended code to development projects under land use or permit review at the time the ordinance takes effect. The full impact statement on this item includes information on financial and budgetary impacts and analysis, economic and real estate development impacts, and community impacts and community involvement. Four people testified during the committee meeting on August 12. Three people submitted written testimony on this item prior to committee action. The general themes of this testimony included streamlining permitting to support development and revitalization of commercial spaces, a suggestion to focus future work on infrastructure-related costs and impact on the city's housing production goals, and finally, a request to extend the two-year grace period to allow additional time to bring nonconforming development up to code. And that concludes the committee staff summary.
Thank you very much. Counselor Avalos, you were presiding over that meeting. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that summary?
Not much, other than to say that I'm grateful to my colleagues for putting together this effort. It is the first of many steps that our committee is going to be taking on code revision reform. This one was kind of the low-hanging fruit, and I think it signals our intentions to really dig in, to remove as many barriers as possible, make sure that people can get housing built. So I'll pass it on to Counselors Mario and Dunphy if they want to add anything, because they are the sponsors of the bill.
Counselor Mario, Counselor Dunphy, I believe you brought this jointly with the mayor. Is there anything you'd like to add? Counselor Dunphy, go right ahead.
Yeah, you know, this is a really thoughtful process. I wish I could take more credit for it, but it was some amazing staff work that's been going on since November. This is, looking at some of those things that are just sort of silly in our code sometimes. If you're adding a bathroom, why do you have to add trees? We love trees, but that certainly adds a level of complexity and cost when we're trying to get things moving in this city. This is not speaking specifically to development of new apartment buildings necessarily. This is more about a lot of the neighborhood scale improvements that we want to do to try and make sure that we are getting this city moving in the right direction. This is a temporary suspension. I think this is also going to have some longer-term conversations in that interim to make sure that we are actually aligning the code in a proper way and ensuring that our values are met as a community, and that our safety and quality are established, but that we aren't running into those continued buzzsaws of conflicting Bureau requirements and triggers. So I'm excited to see this as a first step for this council and a continued demonstration to the community that we're really serious about getting things built and getting this city moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mario, anything to add?
Ditto to everything that Counselor Dunphy said, and truly, the staff deserve all the praise and all the flowers for this, because this is exactly what government should be doing. This is common sense changes that will help modify buildings in Portland that already exist and just make people's lives easier and better, and that is what I think good government should be doing. So really grateful for all the work that was put into this by staff and excited to support this. So thank you so much for making it easy for us to do something good for the public.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, we do have a few people signed up for public testimony, but are there any questions about the staff summary or the overviews before we move to hearing from the public? Counselor Clark? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. Forgive me, colleagues from the committee, as I repeat myself from the committee meeting. I'm really excited about this work to continue, and of course, I'm all in for this legislation. It's a very wise step. It's also been a long journey since 2021, when, along with Commissioner Maps, we started the Permit Improvement Task Force. We included all three other Commissioner offices, and that was the first time in Portland's history that it was done in such a comprehensive, collective way. And one of the best things we did, our office sponsored hiring Terry Tyson in the 2122 Budget, and then we followed up with adding three people to that team. Yes, this is exactly why this is moving along, because we put staff in the budget to be working on this project. It didn't start in November. I'll have to edit the comment made by Counselor Dunphy. It started years ago. It's been a long journey. And so I just want to acknowledge, Terry, where are you? There you are. Like wave or something, stand up. And is your team here? Are they here? They're all next to you. All right. Congratulations to all of you for this hard work. Yes, acknowledge them. Anyway, it's grateful that the last council approved this budget item so we could continue this along. I appreciate seeing the suspension of upgrade requirements includes many of the most common complaints I've heard from homeowners and small businesses around Portland for the last few years as barriers for staying in business and also for expanding location in our city limits. When we're looking at some of the key culprits of the code clutter, I do want everyone to listen to this on the dais, which confuses staff, as you can only imagine how it confuses the customers. One of the key culprits is linked to the last-minute walk-on amendments from elected officials. My hope is this council will not continue this uncharitable legacy. Thanks.
Counselor, Counselor Smith, did you have?
Yes.
Questions while we still have Claire available?
Yes. Thank you so much for presenting. How will we ensure that PSEF tree planting efforts are aligned with the code alignment plan?
Counselor Smith, I think that's a question better answered by the staff who worked on this project.
Okay.
Counselor Smith, would you like to ask that now, or should we save that for discussion?
We can do it under discussion.
Okay. Do you have any additional questions?
No, ma'am.
Madam President, can I just ask a quick question and then come back later? I just want to ask, why, what was the rationale behind the sunset?
Counselor Dunphy, is that something that the administrator to weigh in on, or is that something that you'd like to take?
You know, I don't have the specifics at this moment. I think if we can get staff to respond to that.
Why don't we have somebody come up from the staff team that's been working on this? I don't know if that is D.C. Olivera, or if that's somebody from the department, from the Bureau. Perfect. We'll get a couple of these technical questions out of the way, and then we will hear from members of the public who are here to speak to the ordinance as well. Go right ahead.
Good morning. For the record, Morgan Tracy, Senior Planner with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I think in response to the question about the rationale behind the temporary suspension, as you may be aware, the complexity of our codes, when you put them all together, there are fine threads that sort of bleed into one another. As you start to unweave this code, there's potential for unintended consequences, and we want to be able to best understand how those consequences will play out. So as we started developing alternatives to this temporary pause, in other words, revising the thresholds, right sizing the thresholds that would apply to these development situations, we quickly learned that there were a lot of different ways to approach it, all with different consequences, either positive or negative, that all required further study and analysis. We also recognized that there was an immediate need for action, and we didn't want to delay. And so we took the approach of putting in a pause for the moment to give staff time to further evaluate what that more permanent solution would look like and better understand what those consequences were at the back end. Also, we are in a moment here in our economic climate that may change over time, and so we want to be able to better respond to that as those conditions change over the next several years as well.
Thank you. Anything to add?
Thank you for that.
Counselor Smith, because we have staff up here now, would you like to return to your question?
So I want to go to my original question. How will we ensure PSEF tree planting efforts are aligned with the code alignment plan?
Thank you, Counselor Donnie Olivera, for the record. Counselor, the Urban Forestry Program, working with the Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Fund staff, work with community advisory panels that inform like where our tree planning is going to go. This code is really designed to speed up like our internal processes, but it would have no bearing on how we like distribute and plan and maintain our urban canopy.
Okay. And just one last thing, Donnie. With suspension of these requirements, are we losing revenue?
Counselor, that's a question that's sort of a how-long-is-a-string type of question, meaning this program really is an opportunity to speed up our processes. There may be material impacts in infrastructure that's currently financed by the private sector when they're doing, like I think there was alluded to, Counselor Dunphy's mentioning of the tree program when someone's doing a tenant improvement in a building. Where we may see impacts is the ADA ramp requirements. That could be a material impact to that infrastructure, but at a very small, I think we said 15, approximately 15 a year. But again, that's all dependent on how many projects are coming into the city. If there's no projects, we have other issues.
Okay, we sure do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Counselor, I'll draw your attention to the analysis from the city budget office, which does have a nominal potential increase cost listed for some work that is currently funded through construction projects, but it's all very small. Okay. Counselor Knoll, did you have questions for staff before we hear public testimony and move to discussion?
Yeah. Yes, Madam President. The question I have was related, it's just the only number that's cited here is the $500,000 that would be forgone revenue in the context of ADA ramps. What's the overall dollar amount that would be forgone revenue?
Well, again, for the record, Morgan Tracy, Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, that's a hard number to quantify. Again, as Donnie alluded, it is dependent on how much development is we, the city is experiencing. So sort of taking these four pauses in order, we can start with the nonconforming upgrades, which are requirements that are applied to different development situations. It's all onsite improvements, like bike parking, landscaping, those sorts of things. So there's no direct financial impact to the city for the loss of that. It's more of a trade-off in terms of the public benefit that's lost. For the street tree planting requirement, there's no, again, no mandate that the city backfills the lack of those trees being planted, but we do have the PSEF funding that is more than making up for that offset. The seismic evaluation report, again, is an applicant cost, it's not a city cost. And the street frontage improvement, I think, is the one element that really has some bearing, because the city is under obligation under a court settlement to provide a certain number of ADA ramps per year, and if the development community isn't providing some portion of that, we are still obligated to make that, meet our commitment. So that's the one area where there is that potential for direct financial implication back to the city.
Maybe I should clarify, and this is, I think, more specific to the second of those four, the street trees. And using, I'm assuming that you have a model based off of, you said it's variable based on the amount of development, but if we had an exact continuation of where we're at now, I'm assuming there was a model made on this. And then, secondly, as it relates to street trees, I'm talking about that there is a cost that would be, cost is not necessarily the right word here, there would be an obligation to maintain the level of planting to maintain and grow our canopy, regardless of it being a legal obligation through a settlement, the way Creek is. So in order to maintain that, I assume there was a model made about the cost.
I'm waiting for my urban forestry partner to join me.
Of course, not trying to, yeah, thanks.
Thank you for joining us. Go right ahead and introduce yourself.
Sure thing. Hi, everyone. Brian Lando with Urban Forestry. So we did look at what the anticipated impact on tree planting would be as a result of this. I think what we've seen is that we're in a sort of a diminishing return period for regulatory code-required tree planting. We've seen an increase in the number of projects which are triggering the tree planting requirement, but there actually isn't space for a new street tree to be planted. And so we're anticipating maybe a few hundred fewer trees be planted every year, but we're planting several thousand street trees through the PSEF program, and that is directing trees not where private development dollars are going, but where trees are needed most.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green, did you have questions at this point?
Just for discussion.
Okay. Counselor Dunphy, did you have questions for this time?
Yeah, just for the public and for my colleagues around the table, I want to just sort of put a finer point to this. If you are a homeowner and you want to add a bathroom in your basement, and say you want to spend $25,000 on this, please don't quote my math, I'm not a math guy, but say you want to spend $25,000 adding a new bathroom to your basement, city code right now requires you spend about $2,500 on street trees. It's a trigger that at a certain dollar point, if you are spending more money on an existing str-. an existing structure, renovating something, adding a mother-in-law unit to your basement, whatever it is, it automatically triggers this requirement. And so if I'm, as a homeowner, you know, renovating my bathroom, suddenly I have to add trees. Not that trees are not a bad thing, but it's not directly related to the action that is happening inside of your home and it becomes an obstacle that some people just say, screw it, I'm not going to bother renovating my bathroom at this point. So that is really the goal of these things, is to look at those opportunities where folks are wanting to do the work in their homes, in their businesses. There's another example that I can give is, for example, the nonprofit Friends of Noise is attempting to open a all-ages music venue in an old strip club in North Portland. Because of the amount of money that they spent on the inside of it, they were required to redo the curb cuts on the street in front of it. And that was an additional, I think they said some $25,000 or $30,000 that they had not raised and they were not ready to be able to pay for. Four curb cuts that were out of compliance, but were also pretty good still. There are examples like that across the city where our, our good intentions are actively stopping us from getting new businesses and new development and getting people to work to improve the built environment. So as I had said earlier, you know, this is not about walking back our commitment to street trees, as we heard thousands of new street trees will be planted. And the reality is that we need more street trees in my part of town, District One, where people aren't having the extra capacity to add a bathroom to their basement. We don't need a whole lot more street trees in Laurelhurst right now, we need them in Powellhurst. So this will continue that work and also hopefully allow folks to, to make those improvements how they want. So, thank you, staff.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, I don't see anybody else in the queue for questions for the folks before us, so I'll let you all go back to your seats. Thank you very much for being here today. And Rebecca, could you please call up members of the public who have signed up for public testimony?
First is Wade Lang.
Welcome, thank you for being here today.
Good morning. For the record, my name's Wade Lang and I'm here today representing the Building Owners and Managers Association of Oregon, or BOMA. BOMA is a commercial real estate organization representing over 40 million square feet of commercial real estate in the state of Oregon. BOMA is in full support of the code alignment project. Simplifying the permitting process to make it more efficient has always been a goal of our membership. Just as important, the amendments within the code alignment project will reduce the cost of a tenant improvement project while also reducing the timelines for completion. As I'm sure you're all aware, the commercial office industry in Portland is hurting. It is important for building owners to move a new tenant into their buildings quickly and economically. The code alignment project will certainly help in this process. Non-conforming requirements often take owners by surprise, costing their projects more than expected and delaying their completion. The code alignment will help bring more certainty to their projects. Portland office buildings need this type of incentive to help reduce the vacancy rate within Portland. We also support and offer our help in developing long-term code alignments. I was serving on the Portland Planning Commission when the code alignment project came before us in June. While we only looked at changes to Title 33 and Development Regulations, in Title 11 we unanimously passed these revisions. It is the right time for this move forward and we hope it will ultimately lead to a more efficient and transparent permitting process. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Kelly Ross.
Welcome, please introduce yourself and go right ahead.
Good morning, Madam President and Counselors. My name is Kelly Ross and I'm here this morning to represent NAOP, the Commercial Real Estate Development Association, and here to voice our strong support for this ordinance and to also express strong appreciation to city staff for developing this and bringing it forward. I also want to highlight for you a letter that I believe was submitted to the clerk last night or this morning that's signed by 10 other business organizations expressing support for this. We believe strongly that delays laid out by this ordinance will continue Portland's aggressive actions that have previously been made to improve and speed up the permitting process for commercial development and in so doing will help bring new tenants to commercial spaces that are currently vacant. So thank you very much and encourage your iVote.
Thank you very much.
Michelle Schultz. Michelle is online.
Welcome, Michelle.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good morning, Madam President and members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Michelle Schultz. I'm a licensed architect, principal and owner of GBD Architects. We are a Portland-based firm headquartered in District Four and we're proud to have helped design and revitalize many parts of this community. We love working here and want to keep investing in Portland's future, but right now we're seeing a slowdown in development, especially for renovations and additions caused by complex processes and financial hurdles that make it harder to improve and adapt our existing buildings. That's why I'm here in strong support of the code alignment project postponement. I also want to acknowledge and thank city staff for their hard work for shaping this proposal today. By temporarily suspending certain upgrade requirements for alterations and additions until 2029, CAP removes redundant regulatory hurdles, streamlines permitting, and allows property owners and small developers to move projects forward quickly. It provides immediate relief without compromising public safety while still maintaining transparency and accountability. This is more than a technical fix, it's an economic catalyst. CAP will make it easier to invest in existing buildings, activate vacant spaces, and support both small businesses and Portland's urban core. It sends a strong message that Portland is open for business, committed to revitalizing our neighborhoods and downtown, and ready to partner with the community to create a vibrant, livable city. As a board member of both NAOP and BOMA, I also want to highlight, as Kelly did, that this perspective is not mine alone. A broad coalition of local business and community organizations have submitted a joint letter to support as part of this written testimony. This coalition recognizes that CAP provides common sense, time-limited relief that will reduce costs, bring greater consistency to city codes, and help keep small projects feasible. I urge you to support the postponement so that important projects can proceed now instead of stalling and disappearing. This is a crucial step to keep Portland moving forward. Thank you very much for your consideration and support today.
Thank you.
That completes testimony.
Thank you, Rebecca. Colleagues, we now have an opportunity for further discussion. I'll note that this is a non-emergency ordinance, so we are discussing today and then moving to a second reading. There's not a vote today. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President, and I would be interested if there was any interest in making an emergency ordinance. There may be support for that. I think, I feel some sense of urgency around this. But before we talk about that, I just want to thank Counselor Ryan for the work that he did in the past to bring us to this point and to thank the committee under the leadership of Counselor Avalos and all the staff to bring us to this point because I feel such a sense of urgency around this. So many of us who ran for this position heard about these roadblocks, experienced them personally in our neighborhoods, among our friends, some of the, what some people thought were really ridiculous requirements when they did want to add a bathroom, Counselor Dunphy. So I really appreciate that. I also feel a great sense of urgency around what's the next phase? What's the next step we're going to take? And can we expedite that? So I appreciate that because I know that we do still have things on the books that stand in the way of progress, whether it's a small project or a large project. And I've experienced that personally in my neighborhood. So thank you for that and thank you to our witnesses who, I paid attention through the whole process, I think, and really appreciate your being here today. I don't know if there is any interest in an emergency move to implement this immediately. I would make that proposal.
Counselor, are you testing the waters and hoping folks will weigh in on that or are you proposing an amendment?
Well, I'll propose an amendment that we actually make, put an emergency clause on this.
And when we make something an emergency ordinance, we need to list what the emergency is?
Ah, the emergency is that without these changes, we're, we have impediments in the code to development, to economic development, the kinds of things that we've heard from our witnesses today.
I see a bit of a meeting going on over there with some of our attorneys and our DCA.
May I jump in quickly?
Please.
It's my understanding that the implementation date in the ordinance is October 1st because there's an agreement on land use that there will be two set implementation dates for PPND. So it's not, having this as an emergency doesn't necessarily...
Thank you, Lindley, I appreciate that. I withdraw my suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green?
Thank you, Madam President. I would have voted for that because I appreciate your spirit here. I'm prepared to support this, colleagues, for a number of reasons, but before I get into that, I just really want to thank PPND and acknowledge frankly the stance of urgency that they've taken. You know, over the years, I think this part of our city has taken some punches and been blamed for a lack of development in this city that are frankly largely external macroeconomic conditions. Doesn't mean though that we can't look internally and say, how can we do better? And they have been doing better. Recently, they helped move a school that was right next to the ICE facility in record time. So that school could open up before the start of the school year and that, those kids are still in that school and that was heroic work by PPND. So this is just more of the same. So they deserve some applause for that, but not right now because that breaks decorum. I think that there's a couple of things that are interesting for me just from an economic standpoint. One is that, and Counselor Dunphy, you sort of highlighted this with your vignette, that if you create a regulatory requirement or cost that is overly burdensome, then people have an incentive to evade that requirement. And, you know, I'm not going to name anyone that I know, but I, but it is, but it is true that people do try to avoid pulling a permit for work they might do inside of their house if it becomes something that is really hard to comply with. And I think we have, we have an interest in making sure people comply with our regulatory requirements, pursue, pull a permit in good faith and then we get that revenue and then we have sort of this, this partnership with a built environment that's consistent with our comprehensive plan and our codes. I think this helps us get closer to that. I also really like the model of pairing a temporary pause in a very targeted way in our code with a more thoroughgoing review because as the gentleman had mentioned, it is kind of a ball of yarn, so to speak. And I'm more interested in moving swiftly to adjust the crises and the emergencies that we face in our economy than sort of, you know, tackle it all upfront. So I think that's actually a really good model and this is, I'm prepared to support more of that in the future. On the infrastructure cost, I mean, that's a very real thing for us to think about, but I'll note that we passed a bond earlier in our tenure this year that, that sort of bond financed much of that ADA obligation and that's going to be supported in part by general fund revenue. And so if we can do things like this that allow an increase in commerce and economic activity, that was going to support our general fund revenue. So these things are interconnected in that regard. And I also think this, this could help solve some of our vacancy rate issues. I know Counselor, or Counselor Ryan is concerned about this as well as the co-chair of the Arts and Economy Committee, as well as my District Four colleagues who, you know, when we go downtown, we see a 30% vacancy rate. So if you're able to do a tenant improvement at a lower cost, then you can sign a lease at a cost that is required to kind of lease these spaces up. So I see nothing but benefits, I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. All the points that have been brought up are really, really important and great. I just, makes me think, you know, when we talk about foregone revenue relative to a code cleanup, I think in the context of a code cleanup, it wasn't ever foregone revenue. I think this is just the end of us robbing people for erroneous actions. And so this is exactly the right thing that we should be doing for residents of Portland because I don't think we really had a right to any of that money to begin with. If you get to the reason of a code, a code is about safety, right? We want the bathroom that's installed in the basement to be safe, to be something that the next owner can have faith that it was installed in a way. And any incentive to not take a permit out because of cost reasons gets us further and further away from safety. So if you think about some of those basics, about why does a code exist, this is really moving us in the right direction and we have 1,000 miles to continue going. And so that's really important and I, and I appreciate the staff perspective of there are sometimes some unintended consequences and I invite, as we bump into those, I invite that opportunity to polish it and clean it up more. To the sponsors, I appreciate your work on it, glad it came to the, to the committee. And then I also just want to flag on here, the danger of setting things like a $25,000 threshold. Some of you know that my first job out of college was working for the Multnomah County Assessor's Office where I would inspect homes. I was a residential property inspector. And Measure 50 allowed counties to increase the property assessed rates of homes if they did more than $10,000 in a year in changes, remodel, siding, et cetera. It was designed to be about major remodels, not general upkeep of a property, which general upkeep of a property is the thing that keeps low and medium income families in their homes for the long time as you're able to keep it up. It also said $25,000 over a five-year period. So if you do siding, maybe a roof, these are all normal things. Except those, those numbers mean absolutely nothing like they meant in 1997 that they do in 2025 because to replace a roof on a little ranch house will cost you $25,000 and yet that's considered by law to be regular ongoing maintenance, but today that would incite a new tax assessment, which is out of line with where we're at. I bring that up because the cost of extra improvements that when we put that on there, the cost of improvement should not trigger more things to be done. It is a way in which we ensure that those who are able to do things are only those who've got the deepest pockets. Residential infill is not being completed by regular, normal Portlanders today. It's being completed by people who have the money to do all the other extra stuff. So anytime we slap on a, an arbitrary number like $25,000 and we don't connect it to inflation, we will bump into this in 25 years. We'll bump into this in five years. We have this terrible, I think terrible habit in a lot of things at the county, at Metro, at the city of setting a number but not attaching it to anything to grow with time and space and, and projecting what it means five years, 10 years and 25 years down the road. So great improvements, looking forward to more of them. Thanks to the sponsors. You all should vote yes for this and defend yourself if you want to vote no.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, as Counselor Zimmerman noted, we have a habit of essentially upgrading our city through small projects that developers or individuals at times take on, on their properties. And that's a habit that we are moving away from, but in the short term, there are some real, real implications of doing that. And we've talked about some of those today. And so I just, I have a question for our colleagues who sit on the committee. The testimony that we heard today was all positive, the testimony that was reported on from committee was all positive. Did you as committee members debating this have any outreach from organizations expressing concern either about the short-term consequences of this shift away from a policy in the city where we upgrade our infrastructure through tacking on costs to small projects around our city to hopefully an approach where we actually take on those costs more holistically and strategically as city costs? Either folks concerned about tree canopy in the short term or upgrades to our streets or anybody who was concerned with that long-term cost shift back to city resources for those projects?
I don't recall any, receiving any negative testimony written or verbal from anybody and I also, thanks to the really diligent work of our, our staff who did this, there was a lot of proactive outreach that was done ahead of that. And my understanding is that while not everybody was thrilled because there is some concern that the city may backpedal on some of our values, that was not, that was a broader concern as I understand it and not, not specific to the, anything in this. I don't recall any other negative testimony or, yeah.
Okay. And I see heads shaking from some of the other committee members shaking no. And I see heads shaking from some of the other committee members, shaking no. Thank you. I think a move like this is the right direction and the right thing to do, but I also have some concern about us following through on our commitments to make sure that we continue to fund things like our tree work and our street development work. And I know budgets are tight, so I just wanted to make sure that we hadn't heard any negative concerns there. Thank you. Counselor?
I just wanted to add as well, yeah, we did not, I don't recall receiving any negative feedback during the committee meeting, nor has my office received any major concerns. And as co-chair of the Climate Committee, who converses with climate advocates quite often, I can tell you that they are very aggressive in letting you know if they don't like something, so, and I think that's a good thing. So I have not received any communications about that. And again, I really want to emphasize that if we're talking about the efficient allocation of resources, people who have worked on this for a long time, researched it, done the outreach, have recognized that this is all going to be best accomplished through the Portland Clean Energy Fund as opposed to through individuals who are going to be planting trees. That's just not an efficient way of managing a city and making sure all of our infrastructure is being overseen in one collective manner that's going to be much more organized. So this is, in my opinion, going to actually improve our tree canopy if we do it the right way, and I think that we can and will. So thank you for that.
Thank you, colleagues, for the thorough answers to my question. I can be even more excited to support this, knowing that we didn't receive any concerns. Counselor Canall?
Thank you, Madam President. Sometimes I think questions I may ask from the perspective of due diligence are interpreted as oppositional, and I want to take the opportunity to clarify that. That's not the case here. I agree with what Counselor Morio just said about the more efficient way to ensure tree canopy expansion being separate from private developers on an individual project-by-project basis. There was one piece, and this is sort of the underlying reason that I asked the questions I did, of oppositional testimony in writing. I think it came in after the committee hearing, so it wouldn't necessarily have been discussed there, although I don't actually think we have the date available on the written testimony easily. And it talks primarily about the frontage side of it. So I did want to just kind of explore that, and I appreciate the staff doing that. That being said, I am inclined to support this, and I'm looking forward to the conversation developing and when we get to it in the next meeting. End of vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Koyamaline?
I'm excited about this for a number of reasons. I also want to thank the staff, the former commissioners, especially the one that's sitting here, all of your work on this, and also the committee that took this up and those who are introducing this. I think this is a great example of finding where there are bumps, challenges, and figuring out how to problem solve. How do we tweak the code to make sure that we're actually serving Portlanders better? I've been on some tours, and I have seen where some of the code is not helpful or it's not meeting our goals. We have some big goals about the climate crisis. We need to make sure that we're not just checking boxes and folks are planting one little tree in a small area of concrete that will be dying soon anyway. So this is a great example of, okay, instead of throwing out an entire program, how can we make little tweaks to benefit everyone and not give up on our goals? So I feel really excited that there are so many different folks at the table excited about this, and we know that it's always going to be more exciting for us, things to be polarizing, and for things to seem more dramatic than they are, and to make it seem like we're always on different sides. But we'd just like to highlight that this is being introduced by the mayor, Counselor Morio, and Counselor Dunphy, and this very much is about helping make sure that we can have development upgrades. And so I don't want to hear that some counselors never care about economic development or developers or landowners, homeowners, because here we go.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, seen no one else in the queue, we will close discussion on this agenda item, and it will come back at our next meeting on second reading.
So, Council President, because this is a land use item, we need to continue it to a time and date certain. It is my understanding that it is likely there will be a special meeting on the 24th, if that's the next one. Would you like to identify with the clerk a date and time, please?
Colleagues, assuming that our next agenda item passes and we are moving to weekly meetings, my intent was to have us have a special meeting on the 24th. I had said that we would have special meetings, to have weekly meetings until that ordinance was implemented and those weekly meetings were part of our regular schedule. So yes, why don't we move this to the 24th as a time certain item on that agenda?
And Rebecca?
As I say that, I'm looking into the crowd to make sure, okay, thumbs up from DCA Olivera, that that's not too late. Perfect.
So 9:45 on the 24th.
Perfect. Thank you very much for catching that, Linley. Okay, we will move this to a second reading at 9:45 on the 24th of September at a special meeting, which I don't believe has been posted yet, but colleagues, you do have a hold on your calendars, and for members of the public, that will be posted soon. Rebecca, could you please read the next agenda item for us? I know you may need a minute to write down the land use details there first.
The next agenda item is Item 10, Adopt Council Regular Meeting Schedule Pursuant to Code Subsection 3.02.010 C1.
Colleagues, this is a second reading, so unless there is further discussion, we will move to a vote. Okay. Seen none. Rebecca, can you please call the roll?
Koyamaline?
Aye.
Morio?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Canall?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hurdleguine?
Aye.
The ordinance passes with 12 aye votes.
Thank you. Could you please read the next agenda item for us?
Item 11, amend parking space reservation code to allow for flexibility in the distribution of responsibilities.
There we go, mic on. Thank you. And colleagues, this is a first reading, so Claire, you beat me to it. We have a committee staff summary.
Madam President, Counselors, again for the record, Claire Adamset, Council Policy Analyst and Staff to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. The ordinance before you document 2025-301 was heard in the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee on August 11th, where it was referred to council with a recommendation to pass. The ordinance amends Portland City Code Section 16.20.460 related to parking space reservation to enable PBOT temporary street use permitting staff to reserve on-street parking spaces in metered areas. The ordinance also allows a permutee to request that the city install parking reservation signage in non-metered areas as appropriate. The full impact statement on this item indicates no anticipated financial and budgetary impacts, nor economic real estate impacts, nor community impacts. No verbal or written testimony was submitted on this item prior to committee action, and that concludes the committee staff summary.
Thank you, Claire. Counselor Clark, you are presiding at this meeting. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, it's very straightforward. It's just shifting staff who can do what. It's pretty simple. Unfortunately, we have to go through all this process to make that happen.
We have some opportunities to make things more efficient in the future. Colleagues, are there any questions for either Claire, Counselor Clark, or perhaps the city administrator? This does come from the administration before we move to any public testimony. Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. I'm hoping that somebody can help me answer the question about why something like this is coming to council, but the extension of the parking hours was an action that the mayor could take unilaterally. We voted in our budget, and it was a split vote, but we voted in our budget about increasing the parking rates, and I understood that. But then to hear that the extension of the hours was something that did not have to have any council action on has caused me some confusion when this, what also seems like a very mundane activity, is now coming to council. So clearly, I'm taking the opportunity to inform the public that it was not this council who extended your hours, but also I do need clarification for where we weigh in and where we do not weigh in. And I'm just exploiting the opportunity of parking being on the topic.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Jordan, are you able to help us understand the difference here? Because I have also received a fair amount of feedback about the extended parking hours and hadn't recalled that being in the actual materials that we voted on.
Yeah, I struggle a bit myself, but my supposition would be that there is something in current code that designates these assignments in some way, shape, or form regarding parking enforcement or parking management, and that's my guess as to why it's in code. And we've come to you, as most of you know, and Counselor Ryan suffered through, we did waves of code change late last calendar year to try to remove things that were administrative and put them in administrative rule rather than keep them in code. I assure you, we did not catch everything, and so this may be one of those instances. So.
Thanks. I appreciate that answer, and I certainly would expect that there will be many of those that come up. I think that while we go through these first few years of this change, being as transparent as we can about it is helpful. This one is just the controversy de jour or month, and so I took the opportunity. So thanks, Mike.
Counselor, anything further? Counselor Canall?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I appreciate Counselor Zimmerman bringing that topic up, and I would like to talk about this somewhere more because it is something I've also heard about. Relatedly, my question for the sponsors here is, why does this need to even say parking enforcement or temporary street use permitting as opposed to city staff? Why does it need to be as specific as it is even if we're adding a second enumeration? I understand that there's some context where, you know, we don't want to be telling, saying any city staff will do something that there's a reserved ability to do, for example, law enforcement under state law. But in this particular case, it seems a little bit broader, that it's not necessarily a question of legal authority. It's a question of our assignment of authority to within the 7,000 staffers of the city of Portland, which groups will do it. And I'm curious why it needs to be standard all. Thanks.
Counselor, is that, so this came from the administration. Mr. Jordan, I think that I saw DCA Donapal walk in, though I'm not sure if she's still here. Do you have somebody who you'd like to have come up and help us with this? We're pausing for just a moment.
Madam Chair, can I just interject here for a second? That I think your question, Counselor Canall, is a much bigger question than just this particular situation. And per Counselor Zimmerman's comments, this really requires a different kind of look at, I think, in terms of both the code and where we have purview and where we don't. These are larger issues than just this little one today.
Good morning. This is Priya Donapal, DC for Public Works, and I believe the question is about the parking code hours and the, is that correct? Sorry, I was just walking in.
I think there was a question that has both a broad and a narrow piece to it. The broad piece, I think we need Mr. Jordan to answer, and the narrow piece, perhaps you, about how specifically we assign rules to staff. Would you like to repeat the question more specifically than that, Counselor Canall?
You're about 95% of the way there. Why does it need to say these two entities at all as opposed to city staff will, is the question?
We have Matt Grum from PBOT who can talk specifically about the parking hours and your question in particular.
Thank you, Counselor Canall. Matt Grum, Portland Bureau of Transportation. The code historically has always had parking enforcement officers were the key piece, staff that were in charge of all metered areas. Through time and efficiencies, we've learned that the staff that does the temporary street use permits can do that, freeing up the time for the park enforcements to do their job. We still, obviously, as an agency and a bureau, want to have the appropriate people out in the street doing that work, and so opening it up to anyone is, you know, is a situation that we're not prepared yet to go. We could expand it in the future, depending on what we looked at, but right now, these staff are the professionals we feel can do it.
Thank you. And just to clarify that, Counselor Clark, we're not proposing an amendment. I'm just trying to understand here. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm just a big plan and role clarity. It makes sense that PBOT employees are doing work that aligns most with their areas of responsibility. We need to make sure that our parking enforcement teams are focused on the highest priority work that includes managing the cities right of way. Our parking enforcement teams play a big part in managing that. Critically important work is addressing our city's growing challenges in every neighborhood around abandoned vehicles on our streets. We all get a lot of calls about that. And the teams also have a vital role in connecting individuals living in those vehicles with service providers. I have the pleasure of working with PBOT when we opened Sunderland, and you were really a game changer in how we were able to get people into the Safe Rest Village there. We found that the county's outreach workers were quite inadequate, and so we really did have to rely on PBOT. So I'll always thank you for that. The teams that you have are vital role in connecting individuals living on the streets and getting them off. The streets are, the streets need to be stable and safe places for all Portlanders. We want to make sure that we increase PBOT's capacity to do this work. I support the parking space reservation responsibilities, moving over to temporary street use permitting, and of course, I'll be voting aye on this. And I think it's really important, when we have PBOT operational issues, it helps when we just get a little more context because it's kind of up there at the top of the list on what you get questions about. And so this just allows us not be tongue-tied, but to support your efforts to improve your efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green?
Thank you. This discussion has now made me want to weigh in on the specificity of the staff. I appreciate your answer on making sure that, hey, we want this to be like still very targeted to a certain type of worker, but I think that should be something that, in my view, would fall to administrative rulemaking. And so I don't think I necessarily want to amend your code proposal today, but I think like the next time we do a code cleanup package that's kind of largely administrative in nature, we might look for an opportunity to revisit this section of the code and strike these specific rules and say, you know, as described in administrative rule, such and such as appropriate. And so I think there are some areas in our city where we want to be specific about who does what work, and that makes sense. But as I think through this, you know, temporary street use permitting staff as a label itself might change, but now it's written in code. And so just wanted to kind of offer that for you to think about, Mr. Jordan and Priya. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimmerman?
Yeah, I think that having been a deputy city administrator in a couple of other cities, the idea that my Public Works Department, I only had a certain employee who could put a sign up, is absurd to me. But this is the Portland way, and I think that this idea that only PBOT bureaus employees have the ability to cover a sign is another example of us not really breaking out of our old bureau model, and I don't think we should continue to support, one, I don't think this should be in code. Two, I don't think our codes that do exist, or administrative rules that do exist, should further the silos of the bureau model. The bureau model, I think, should continue to be archived. We are in the department model now, and the service area is the word we use, but the Public Works Department is what I care about. I care about the perspective of that DCA most of all. And so the city and employee, whether it be the secretary of the director, or the parking enforcement officer, or whomever got the stapler, the duct tape, and the sign, is what makes sense to normal Portlanders when we say, oh, we're going to block off a road for XYZ permitting use. So I understand the purpose, the spirit of it. It also is still a little bit too protectionary for me, and I'm not going to be supporting the protectionist side of this because I think that's what this is doing. And so I will look forward to an additional code cleanup, and I think probably a code excising, and we'll just cut this out and just get back to rationality. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we will close our discussion for today and move this to second reading. Thank you all for coming up last minute there. today and move this to second reading. Thank you all for coming up last minute there. And Rebecca, I believe that is the last item on our agenda. Is that correct? Oh, no.
I have item seven from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Can you please call up our last item?
Item seven, reappoint Adam Aplenelb and appoint Greg Freeman to the Revenue Division Appeals Board.
Thank you. And colleagues, because this came off of consent, we don't have a committee staff summary presentation, though there is a committee staff summary posted online. I will turn to our finance chair, Counselor Zimmerman. I believe you presided over this meeting. Is there anything that you'd like to share with the group?
I'm checking some notes quickly. And thank you for coming up. But we are unanimous. I know that, speaking for myself, I'm asking the question for most of our boards now if them or any member of their household receives any money from any of our groups. And those answers were no here. So had the support of finance. And with that, I would say if the staff has anything, Madam President, I'd invite that.
Please, do you have anything you'd like to share with the full council before we move to discussion?
Not at all, unless you want me to go over the presentation that I went over at the Finance Committee.
I don't believe we need a full presentation. I'm seeing some heads shaking no. If you want to just share with us the brief reappointment versus appointment, why these two individuals were chosen?
Yes, perfectly. Yeah, so we have two ARDA members that have expired. And so we have one that we are reappointing. His name is Adam Alponak. And I'll just do a little brief intro on him. So Adam, he is a, he's the current ARDA chair. He's a licensed CPA managing partner and CEO of Cobalt PC. He has served on various tax accounting, legal committees, and boards. And he has served the public and city well in the past. And we strongly support his reappointment. And then Craig Freeman is our new appointment. He's a licensed CPA, senior manager at Geffen Mesher with more than 20 years tax professional experience. And this board position also requires approval from Metro by IGA. And they have approved. And we believe Craig would make an excellent new board member.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, do you have any questions? Counselor Zimmerman?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much for introducing the reappointment. I think I am, I'm so always thrilled when people use their expertise to help us in a public way. So I thank you for bringing that forward, and I appreciate the work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canal?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a couple questions. First, these appointments are retroactive to January 1. Can you speak to why that is? And if these two individuals have been serving since January 1?
So I believe they have not been meeting since January 1. I can't not be, I'm not sure exactly because I have, I'm new in this position. But I know we did cancel a recent meeting. I think they were supposed to meet in May, and then again, maybe August or so. And they didn't meet then. And as for why, multiple reasons, we had a lot of turnover in revenue. And then I believe with the city council, it takes longer to get two here. And so that was another factor.
Okay, so first, welcome. Second, thank you.
And I never said, I'm Slieta Holt for the record. Sorry.
Thanks. And I think that makes sense here. I think I'll mention for the administrator for future reference, if folks are not going to be meeting, we should just date their appointment the date of the council appointment process so that it's clearer to the public when someone starts. And especially for those groups, some of which have rolling term lengths. Hopefully, that gets fixed in the long run. But for right now, some of the appointments have rolling term lengths that can allow them to serve longer without a different concern. The second question I had, you've, I think, already answered. So I will stop here through the process of the discussion of those meetings that were canceled.
Okay. And also just to let you know, we do have two more positions expiring at the end of the year. But we will see you guys in a couple months. So we won't have to worry about people serving when they're expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novick?
Ms. Holt, I have no reason to think that you would have the answer to this extremely frivolous question. But I'm an old guy. When I saw the name Aplenelb, it brought on a wave of nostalgia because Robert Aplenelb was a crony of Richard Nixon's. In fact, Nixon was vacationing at his house in the Bahamas when the Watergate burglary took place. And not that I would hold against him at all. But do you have any idea if Adam Aplenelb has any relation to Robert Aplenelb?
I have no idea.
I would encourage you not to engage.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ryan, maybe a question that our staff can answer?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, first of all, I'll support these folks. I have a question, though, Counselor Canal. I thought you would pull things if there was a dissent in the committee. You're going to pull everything off consent, even if it's unanimous in the committee?
I may add a response?
Yeah, I'm asking directly.
All right, Counselor. Thank you for checking.
I'm not, to be clear, the only things I'm pulling off of consent agenda relate to appointments to advisory boards and commissions. So there's plenty of things that remain on there, such as the minutes. I think the consent agenda on the whole is a very important tool. As it relates to this, that's, to board and commission appointments, it's not necessarily relevant whether or not it was unanimous or not, because seven of us are not on a committee. I think in this particular case, and there's a question around the importance of certain bodies as they relate to hearing appeals. So this particular one on the transient lodging tax appeal, for example, I've talked to some of the hotel owners who had questions around how that works and how they could go about addressing those. So it's more about the need to ensure that the board or commission is accurately reflective and that we are engaging with this process so that if and when later on, because this has happened, as I think you probably know better than the rest of us, actually, that often there'll be a recommendation that is not necessarily heated by the city council. And part of the conversation is, well, we didn't really worry about who got appointed. We're going to worry about who got appointed. And so we're going to have to engage with those recommendations because we picked who got appointed. So that's the underlying conversation there. And I've laid it out in more detail in the past, so I'll stop here.
For some reason, on my two-week break, I wanted to ask you this question. So thank you for answering it. I think this does, when we get back to our lovely dialogue about committees and such, I think we need to have more further dialogue about this. I know for me, if it's unanimous, and I still have a question, I feel comfortable going to the chair of that committee and doing dialogue with them. And I just think that this does take up time when we're constantly pulling things off consent. So that's all. So I just wanted to bring that up because we have a lot of efficiency things coming up. We just approve meeting every week, and we still haven't addressed the need for how we get more efficient with our committees. So it's just a relevant topic at this moment.
I agree with you on that last piece. I'll just mention the committee in the whole conversation does relate very directly to this one. And I'm happy to have that.
Thank you, counselors, for that discussion. I'll note, Counselor Ryan, just because you brought up the idea of something that was unanimous, that through conversations with a few of our colleagues, one thing that I have been toying with is the idea that if something comes out of committee unanimously with no public comment in committee, we can assume that it's probably relatively non-controversial. Everybody was present for the committee hearing that maybe regardless of the type of content, those things should go on the consent agenda. And that's something that I'd be happy to separately from this meeting, hear folks' thoughts on. So we do have the opportunity to use consent in more effective ways to help us be more efficient. Counselor Zimmerman?
I have to echo Counselor Ryan's concern. And I want to use this committee, this is a finance committee who generally deals with, if you looked at what was referred to committee by the council president today, some very mundane stuff, right? But there are three members of Peacock on that committee. And if you don't trust me to come talk to me about the people we appoint to in oversight, you've got part of your caucus as well. And I just encourage us to think about, if you have concerns, true concerns, instead of grandstanding concerns about a membership, a person's membership on an advisory body, and that vote was unanimous at finance, that there are colleagues to talk to that can avoid, sometimes we have those people show up here in person, and then they are put to the back end of a five-hour meeting. And I think that volunteer service is important. And when you first brought this up at the beginning of our time together about highlighting volunteer service, I appreciated that part of it. It seems to have gone somewhere down kind of a hill to die on in a way that is becoming, it seems erroneous. It kind of seems like a chance to ask questions of a thing that you're always going to vote for anyway. And it doesn't seem like it's highlighting the service. But I would respect anybody who wants to pull something from consent because you think the committee or any one of us missed something, or you've got a deep concern about somebody's conflict of interest. That's why I'm trying to think about the questions I ask when I'm on committee on these boards about a person and their household, and if they're involved in the thing they're advising on. But I think we're all trying to do that from some perspective. But if we do that in committees for one another, and then always we'll bring stuff here and make everything that goes through committee go through 100% of the same presentation. To Counselor Ryan's point, our use of committees seems moot. And that is concerning for me in terms of where are we going to trust each other? I think that, I have said from the beginning that I was hoping that there are people, like I use Counselor Clark as an example. I am so glad she's on transportation, right? Because she has far more interest in that than I, and skill in that than I personally do. And I like to take the lead from her. I would like to be able to extend that in other places. But if we continually say the committee can't speak for me because I wasn't at it, I just think that we're, let's use this consent agenda and this placing of people on advisory committees as an example of, I'm not sure that committees are going to be able to work for us in the future if we're not going to at least give some deference to one another and the committees who dove in. And I just say that again with, the finance committee is made up of Counselor Avalos, Counselor Novick, Council President Pearl Guinea, Counselor Green, and myself. I cannot think of a more diverse political spectrum of people to represent the city's needs on that committee for a variety of very boring topics and a few occasionally nice, fun topics. So maybe I'm taking it too seriously because it's a finance committee thing today. But boy, we just keep doing this. And then in the time when we're thinking about committee future, I don't know what future we have if this tiniest thing has continually has to be pulled off consent when it should not have been. So I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canal?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the beginning and end of that statement, which is longer than we would have spent on this if we had just pulled it. So if we're talking about efficiency, that's an important note. The beginning and end of this is, I think, relevant here because the comment that this is the tiniest thing is particularly concerning. These boards are much more important than they're often treated as, especially the ones that have direct ability to influence things such as hearing and appeal. We've spent a great amount of time on conversations around what it takes for a homeowner to be able to address certain things when they're trying to build a bathroom or something like that. Tax appeals are going here, including not just for homes, but also for hotel owners, for example. So there's a lot of things that come to this particular board that are relevant. And then on the front end, I'll note that I would happen to disagree pretty strongly that the items that were referred to finance were mundane. We had 11 foreclosure actions, a declaring of a property as surplus and authorizing it to be sold when we're not fully having the conversation about land banking yet, and also an eminent domain authorization that have been sent to finance. I think this, I think it might be a little bit over modest in terms of explaining what that committee is having referred to it. So I'm excited to get into this and in the conversation around the committees. So I'll stop here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark, would you like to weigh in on this discussion?
I sure would. Thank you, Madam President. I set aside this particular, these particular appointments. But what this conversation says to me is that we really need some marriage counseling. You know, we really need, we really need to have some sort of process, which we discussed earlier, and I don't see it moving forward at this point, but some way to work together, to find our common values, and develop an agenda that we can all agree on, and what we want the committees to do, and to try to build some trust around here. We, I think we all ran for office because we wanted to make this system work, and we wanted to all pull together. And I just, I don't see that happening right now. So I know that we're going to talk about this on the Governance Committee at some point. I hope we are revisit the committee issue, revisit the need for some sort of facilitation. But that's just what this conversation says to me. And I just had to throw that out there. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Avalos?
Thank you for this discussion. I just want to weigh in and say that I share a lot of Counselor Canal's concerns about how we talk about certain things as being mundane, as being minimal. I, you know, each individual thing, we could debate, but I think the broader philosophy I disagree with. And I think it is important that we are having this discussion about the way that we operate, the way that decisions come to this body. You know, absolutely am willing to have a thorough debate about the role of committees and all of that. But I think I often hear this debate being shrouded in this concept of, well, we have to trust each other. And I will continue to say that it is not about trust. My job isn't about trusting all of you. My job is to speak for my constituents. My job is to weigh the decisions in front of me and use my judgment, coupled with the voices of my constituents, to make decisions. So if I'm not on a committee, and you are bringing something to this council that I ultimately have one of 12 votes on, then I deserve to have all of the information that I need to make that decision. It is not about the five of you, because at the end of the day, five does not make seven. And seven is what passes things. And this body here, we make decisions, we pass them with a vote of seven. We do not pass them with 12. That is not required. So I do not appreciate this concept of trust being used and weaponized as us saying, essentially claiming that we do not trust each other, because that's not the problem. The problem is not my trust in you as my colleagues. I do trust you all as my colleagues. I do think that everybody is bringing their particular skills to the table. But I deserve the opportunity to represent my constituents, to use my vote as I need to. And that, for me, requires information that requires the process for me to be able to weigh in, in a way that's reflective of the people that I represent. So we will continue to have this conversation clearly. But I just want to put a finer point on this concept because I am tired of being told that I should just trust people when this, at the end of the day, is politics, and I have a vote, and I'm going to use it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mario?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I generally, I actually disagree with pulling these from the consent agenda. And I also fully support Counselor Canal in wanting to do so and getting more information in the values that he brings in addressing governance. That's part of what he was elected to do as a Model UN nerd, as we all know. So I'm grateful for his perspective and what he brings and what he's asking for. I also just want to say, we're being a little dramatic, you guys. The National Guard could come in any week now. So I think the consent agenda is the least of our problems. And we can, we will all pull it together. It will be fine.
I love Counselor Mario, and I also really love governance. So I actually care a lot about the consent agenda and how we can use it to make our meetings run more smoothly and efficiently. I think it's important. I actually believe we have a majority of counselors that think we could be using it more. And I think that's an important conversation. Actually, Counselor Canal is someone who's really open to that and has told the council president and I, he wants to be part of making sure that we can get more things on the consent agenda. This is, this specific thing, I hope, Adam and Craig, you know this is not about you. This is our own issues that are being aired right now. This is about a difference of opinion of what should go on the consent agenda. We have to have that conversation. Some people are more interested in than others. We'll start with it in the Governance Committee. We have to find a way to separate good governance and how to make things run smoothly from some of the interpersonal power struggle type stuff. There's a difference of an opinion between Counselor Canal and the council president on if these should be on the consent agenda or not. I'm not even sure where I stand now. I've kind of gone all over the place. But we do need to figure out how we can get some agreement. And it's not going to be everyone. It might be that we have the majority of folks up here that decide these appointments need to go on the consent agenda, and that's that. And this conversation around using the consent agenda is happening. We, I mean, even just looking We, I mean, even just looking at some of these things today, item 11, maybe some of these things can go on the Consent Agenda. And we are continuing to have people who are donating their time volunteering, we're wasting it in all different ways to make a point, to then make a point against someone making a point. Let's focus on how, what should be on the Consent Agenda, and try to move forward somewhat functionally.
Thank you, councillor. I was going to try to wrap up that conversation, but I think you did an eloquent job at it, so I'll skip that part of my remarks and just bring us back to the topic at hand, which is Agenda item 7, which is an appointment and a reappointment. And I would like to express my gratitude to Mr. Appelnallp and Mr. Freeman for volunteering their time on a really important board within our city. Thank you for being here today, in case we had questions about the applicants, and I'm glad that this is something that we can move forward. Colleagues, seeing no one else in the queue for debate, this is a report, which means I need a motion to move it forward.
Second.
I believe I heard a motion from councillor Avalos and a second from councillor Canal. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Nowick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Pearl Guinea?
Aye.
And the appointments are confirmed with 12 aye votes.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, before you get too excited, I see some people closing their materials already. I messed up. I try to make sure to do that at least once a meeting, and we apparently had folks signed up to testify on Agenda item 11. I didn't think we did, that is my bad, so I want to make sure that we give those individuals an opportunity to share with us their thoughts on the amendments to the Parking Space Reservation Code before we move forward toward the end of the meeting, and that moves forward to a second reading at a future date. So Rebecca, can we reopen that Agenda item and call up those individuals, please?
We can. Agenda item 11, amend Parking Space Reservation Code to allow for flexibility in the distribution of responsibilities, and the first testifier was Hugo Flores, followed by Mark Lee.
Okay.
And I would like to note, neither testifier joined us online at any point during the meeting either.
Okay. Perhaps they didn't show today then. I'm glad we at least had the opportunity to invite them up if they were here, and I apologize that we didn't catch that earlier. Rebecca, I believe that closes out our agenda, is that true? Okay. Colleagues, we passed the ordinance creating weekly meetings. I had said on the record previously that if that passed, I would start scheduling weekly meetings as special meetings until it went into effect, so that we could begin that work immediately. Next week, we have a number of colleagues who are out of town, some out of the state, some out of the country, some of whom are not able to call in. We also have an executive committee scheduled, or an executive meeting scheduled for next week, based on our previous schedule when we didn't have weekly meetings. So we will not have a council meeting next week. We will have our regular council meeting in the evening the week after that, and then I will use that special meeting option to give us a council meeting on September 24th to kick off our weekly meeting cadence. So I just wanted to note that, since that's a slight change from what we had talked about in the past. With that, I will, one other note, apologies, we do have one Agenda item scheduled tomorrow in our recess meeting time, so we will be reconvening tomorrow at 2:00 PM, which means that we are, rather than closing, recessing today's meeting. Thank you very much for being here this morning.